Please note, we are videotaping as well as live streaming on our YouTube channel, and the recording will be available on the YouTube channel. Please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to introduce the school committee members and administration that are in attendance this evening. On my left is Mr. Dan Marino, Mrs. Mainville, Mrs. Davenport, and Mr. Powers, Superintendent, and on my right is...
Dana Schaubz.
Dana Schaubz, thank you. Mrs. King, Mr. Dolan, and Mr. Fitzgibbon's Vice Chair and myself, the Chair. We also have attendants, Ms. Liz Berry, Ms. Tola Babalola, is Mr. Schaubz here? Yes, Mr. Schaubz is over there, and Ms. Judy McDougall, and other members of the administration Each month, I will report out on emails and correspondence from members of the school community. This month, the school committee received emails ranging at topics including an email from a parent expressing her gratitude to her teachers at the Rainham Middle School for supporting her child, an email regarding the incident at the Liberty, and Mr. Powers.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have two items to share. First, I want to start, we had a Merrill family, the Androd family, who graciously donated ten portable fans during that first week of school, as you remember. It was quite warm. They were actually willing to donate ten air conditioners, but unfortunately, our building just wouldn't be able to handle that extra load. So, they did elect to bring those fans in. They were distributed to the rooms that either didn't have fans or they were running very warm. So, we certainly do appreciate that generous donation, and I just wanted to recognize them on behalf of the district and say thank you. The second one, I actually attended an event before this over Bridgewater State. Ms. Gloria Stanton, who is a longtime Bridgewater-Rainham Administrator and Educator, actually just had a scholarship this evening endowed in her name. And so, several of the Bridgewater administrators and I were able to attend over there. They were having quite the event this evening. President Clark from Bridgewater State University was speaking, as well as our very own Mr. Clark from the Williams Intermediate School. So, I just wanted to congratulate and recognize Gloria. She's been a great support and an ally to the district, and I just wanted to take a moment to recognize her.
Thank you. And during the correspondence, I would like to turn it over to Ms. King to introduce the Student Advisory Council.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. So, at our October meeting, the Student Advisory Council will resume their reports, but I did want to have them come in and introduce the new board and their new co-chairs, just to do like a quick bio. Just as a refresher, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 38m, every school committee in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is required to have a Student Advisory Committee of five members, students from their high school. So, we do have a new board of five members, and within those five members, they do elect, they are required to elect a chair, which sits at our meeting table. They are a non-voting member of our committee, but they are, we do have them give a report, and they are welcome to stay at every meeting and to discuss and ask questions and give opinions as well, which is something that we've been kind of fostering the past year as well. So, they did vote in co-chairs. They do have two seniors on the board this year, so they did want to honor both of their seniors and do co-chairs, so they'll be kind of rotating who will be at the table with us. So, to start off, we do have Dani Schaubz, which is one of our co-chairs and a senior
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dani Schaubz, and I'm a senior here at BR, like Ms. King mentioned. This is my third year serving on this board. I've had the honor of being here sophomore, junior, and now senior year, and first year as co-chair along with Nolan. Along with speaking in front of you each month, I'm the co-captain of the debate team, a member of Drama Club, a TJ Squared member, a member of National Honor Society, and newly member of the Yearbook Club. My past years on this board has allowed me to be more involved with the school community, strengthened my public speaking skills, and given me the opportunity to share my voice with you all. I'm so glad to be back this year, and I'm so grateful to have spoken in front of you these past three years. Thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nolan Barbour, and I am so excited to be a co-chair for my second year on the School Committee Advisory Board. For those of you that don't know me, I'm a senior at BR, and I was just named the president of the National Honor Society. As well, I'm captain of the BR lacrosse team, and I've also played on the golf team for all four years. Aside from sports, I'm in the top ranks of my class, and I take part in the student leadership program at BR. I can't wait to get started and report all of our awesome events upcoming this year. Thank you. I'd like to welcome Quinn Daly next.
Hello, everyone. My name is Quinn Daly. I'm a junior at BR, and this is my second year serving on the Student Committee Advisory Board. I am grateful for another great start to the school year in the district, and I can't wait to see how the year goes. I also continue to be involved with many activities at the high school. I am participating in my third year in the marching band, Rainwater, and GSA, which is the Gender Sexuality Alliance at the school. I have done two years of Winter Color Guard, and I've also been a student leader for two years as well. I've also been one of the elected representatives for the symphonic band class for all three years now. I have shared a little bit about my involvement within the high school, and I'm very proud of my accomplishments and wish everyone an excellent school year, and thank you so much for your time. I would like to invite Rachel Corey to the stage.
Hello, everyone. I hope you're all having a great evening. My name is Rachel Corey, and I am now a junior here at BR. I just can't believe that. It is an honor and a pleasure to be here all, to be here again, with all of you again, for another awesome year. Apart from being a representative on this committee board, I am the treasurer of BR's DECA chapter and have been a varsity debater for the past three years now. Last spring, I joined the tennis team and fell in love with the sport. Outside of school, I'm a pianist, competitive dancer, and seasoned baker. I am super excited to meet with all of you and tell you about all the awesome things that BR and its students have to offer. Thank you. Oh, and I would now like to bring Sophia King to the stage.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school committee members, and Superintendent Powers. My name is Sophia King, and I am a sophomore at BR this year. This is my first year on the Student Advisory Council Committee, and I'm so excited to be joining you. Alongside being a member of the committee, I'm an active member of TJ Squared, the BR swim team, and also the math team. I've been a member of TJ Squared for two years now, and I've had so many amazing opportunities with them. I've also been a swimmer for BR for three years now. I started swimming with them in eighth grade, and I've enjoyed every year since. I've also been a girls' cup for 11 years now, and I'm currently working towards my gold award. Thank you so much for today's meeting. I look forward to seeing you at future meetings. That concludes our report.
Great job.
I do know her, and I would like to say she reached out on her own to Ms. Curly last year, so I think my sense of volunteerism is rubbing off on her. I do want to thank the committee for being here and for giving those introductions and welcoming them. As you can see, they do participate in a lot of different aspects in the school, so hopefully they'll bring a lot of that to our meetings. When we work together, I always try and go to their first meeting of the month and kind of go over what they're going to be talking about, what issues from the last meeting they have questions on, so hopefully we can work on that together, and I look forward to their reports at the next meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you all for presenting and introducing yourselves tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll move into public comment. The school committee welcomes information, concerns, and opinions from those attending the meeting. In order to give those wishing an opportunity to speak ensure compliance with the open meeting law and other legal obligations and avoid disruption of the meeting, the committee will not engage with a speaker or with one another in deliberation or comments as they are presented during comment periods. It is the discretion of the committee may schedule issues raised by the speaker for deliberation at a future meeting. If you would like a personal response, please email the committee or Mr. Powers directly following the meeting. The Chair will now open public comment for a period of 12 minutes per policy BEDH, and would ask anyone who wishes to speak to please approach the podium, provide your name and address, and respectfully ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. When your three minutes are up and you have not finished, I would ask you to submit your thoughts or script to our recording secretary, Mrs. McDougall, and she will distribute it to the committee for your review. Is there anyone wishing to speak? One, twice, all right.
Madam Chair, could I just make a note about your three-minute explanation? We had a workshop over the summer where it was made very clear, if we have a three-minute rule, it's a three-minute rule, and it's very important for due process that we have and require everybody to be at three minutes. So, I just wanted to make that clear for the public as they come up in the future, that we're not doing it to be mean, we're not doing it to cut you off, we're doing it because it's a due process thing, and if we say it, we have to do it for you, for everybody. So, just wanted to make that point.
Thank you for clarification, Mr. Fitzgibbon. Next, I will move into items on the consent agenda. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
A motion is made by Mr. Fitzgibbon and second by Mr. Dan Marino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the educational reports by Mrs. Berry.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. Powers, members of the school committee. I'm here to talk about the most wonderful time of the year, school reopening. So, as you know, we were able to welcome students in grades one through 12 back on Tuesday, September 5th, and on Wednesday, September 6th, we welcomed our youngest learners, the students who are in preschool and kindergarten. Enrollment for pre-K to 12, those first couple of days was 5,638 students. To offer a comparison, the year before, we had 5,532 students. We started with over 106 students more, and since those first few days of school, we've actually added 67 more students to our rosters.
Wow.
Leading up to our opening, we had an opportunity to spend two days with over 30 new staff members during our new teacher orientation. In addition to ALICE training and training on educator evaluation, we unveiled our student success plan to our new staff members before taking them on a bus tour around the community to all of the schools. Prior to our students returning, we had two full days with teachers to do professional development, engaging in various activities across the district. Some examples of these activities include content-specific training for our newest high-quality instructional materials, curriculum planning with colleagues, obviously getting classrooms ready, ALICE safety training, and training on new instructional technology that was installed in classrooms over the summer, as well as unpacking our district instructional framework. Though it was my first opening in Bridgewater-Rainham, it was my 22nd opening overall, and this BR opening, as Mr. Powers said, was most certainly the hottest one I can recall to date, but in my experience, it was also the smoothest. So much planning goes into the day, thoughtfully done by administrators at the school level and the district level, as well as teachers and support staff, down to the folks that served that lunch the very first day of school. In addition to that, just thinking about the custodial and facility staff that get the schools ready, as well as the instructional technology staff that works to outfit the classrooms with appropriate technology, a real team effort. I would be remiss if I didn't include families here. The transition from the summer, I think we all would agree, is a real shock to the system, and it's most certainly not an easy one. So, we appreciate all that families and caregivers have done in order to really prepare students for the start of the school year and make sure they're excited about the year to come.
Any questions for Mrs. Berry?
No, go ahead. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You may have this off the top of your head, Ms. Berry, and...
Let's hope I do.
If you don't, it's okay. The 64 new students since opening day?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, sorry. I like my number better, sorry. Did that require any shifting of staff, any new, to go out and hire new staff, or is that concentrated at one level is ultimately, I guess, what I'm looking at? So, Mrs. Berry, if you, we have not, to answer the question about adding additional staff, we have not at this time. Okay.
Monitoring closely, obviously.
Very good. Thank you.
I had almost the exact same question. Where's the increase in growth? Is it, are we retaining more students coming from eighth grade into the high school than we usually do, or is it coming from the bottom up that we have a larger kindergarten than we did in prior years? I know she would be.
So, just kind of a breakdown, the largest numbers increase enrollment, we saw as far as that additional 67, is that where you're referring?
No, no, the 100, so year over year, year over year.
Well, that is something that I'll have to actually spell out for you to...
Oh.
I couldn't speak to the 67.
No, no, that's fine. I just didn't, because it's a very different scenario, right? If we're looking at new young students coming in, filling up the lower grades versus maybe we've done a better job keeping kids moving from eighth grade to ninth grade, and so we don't see the typical drop-off we do. And, you know, so those are different scenarios that we'd have to think about as a school committee, as far as how we allocate resources, et cetera, et cetera. So, that would be great to know eventually. I don't need it today.
Yeah, I mean, I will say that this year, we had for pre-K and kindergarten, we had 575 students. Last year, we had 599, so I was a bit surprised by that. I thought it would be the other way around. What we'll probably do is lay this all out, is as we continue to enroll students, I think we do a more comprehensive enrollment.
And we'll see October 1 anyway. It's all going to come out in the wash on October 1, so...
And that's what I would just say to school committee members, is remember, an October is meaning we will get the official enrollment numbers that go to DESI, and so that will break down by school, by grade level, typically, if I'm correct. So, we'll have a more thorough kind of official numbers that will be presented in October me.
High school is a plus 30, Mr. Fitzgibbon's from last year.
Thank you.
Is that in October? That's, we do that in October?
Thanks.
Yes.
The snapshot is on October 1st, but then most of the numbers have to be certified.
Certified.
Certified by DESI, so usually it's...
November?
Just because it's a work model.
Okay, so November.
Close enough, one of those months with a holiday.
Coming in the next couple of months, we'll have those numbers, the formal numbers. Other questions for Mrs. Berry?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the 67, like that after-school start, is that normal? Like, how much do we usually have, like, after enrollment?
Normal. So, not, that 67 is not normal within that first, say, two weeks of school. I would say typically, your first half to second half, we do see an increase in enrollment, probably reflective of that 67, but nothing like that in the first couple of weeks is not, it's not typical for us.
And you were going to allude to it, like, what is that made up of? Like, who, where did they go, the 67? I think that's where you were going before, and then...
I do have that in print.
Yeah.
It's just a smaller print, so... So, since that date, 14 additional kids at Mitchell, six at Williams, eight at Bridgewater Middle, Merrill, five, La Lib, six, Rainham Middle, 13, and the high school, 14. Thank you for asking that question, because I was prepared for it. Glasses in hand.
Mrs. Berry, I'm going to ask, and I don't, I think I know the answer. I know some of the districts within the state have experienced a big increase due to the immigration crisis, immigration, what is happening within the state of Massachusetts. At this point, have any of our BRs, do we, have we had any students coming in due to kind of immigrant, the immigrants that are coming into Massachusetts? I know there's been a big talk in some communities because it is huge numbers and it's overwhelming their schools.
So, what, and I'm sorry, Mrs. Berry, if you don't mind, sure.
I didn't know what these 67 or any of these students made, some of that.
So, we have not officially received any migrant families, so we've not been notified from the state or from DESI. What we are finding through central registration is that we do have a large number of families coming to us from out of the country. However, they're not, you know, needing to, at this point, be placed in hotels. They seem to be coming to Bridgewater-Rainham because they either have family in town, friends in town, extended family relatives, so we are not necessarily experiencing what other districts are at this point. I, you know, would certainly, looking at both towns, we certainly do have a number of hotels in both communities. Is that something that eventually takes place? I was with some superintendents yesterday, and I did pose the question to them, you know, were you notified prior? Was this a surprise? And everybody that I spoke to said, no, we were given notice that this is going to happen. So, you know, I feel confident at this point, where we haven't been notified by DESI or by the state, that we don't officially, per se, that other districts, but I think when we look at the families that are coming to us, I think it's safe to say that we do have families from out of the country enrolling in Bridgewater-Rainham.
I just, it would be good to know if we, I mean, again, we'll hear from town and from the state. I know what I've read or what I've seen in some of those other districts that are getting an onslaught of migrant families, is the state is reimbursing them for those families in a different mechanism.
Yes.
For some of the cost of those students coming in.
Yes, what I was sharing with you yesterday is that, at least the districts I was speaking with, they're getting an increase in Chapter 70. They'll see some of that money in the fall and then again in the spring. You know, the thought being that it's not going to be ongoing like our monthly Chapter 70, because their hope is that these students don't necessarily require long-term housing in hotels and so forth, that they'll be able to find permanent housing.
Good, thank you. Other questions from the committee?
Thank you, Mrs. Berry.
Thank you. The report for Mr., the Superintendent, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the school committee. I do want to just echo what Mrs. Berry shared with you in terms of our opening. Obviously, you know, our teachers are on the forefront, they're welcoming students, our administrative team, but there's so much more to that that goes into the opening of school. And just like Mrs. Berry, I did want to acknowledge the full team effort from our cafeteria workers to our custodial crew to our building administrative assistants. There really is so much behind the scenes that it was sometimes good, it was unnoticed, so we wanted to make sure that we spent that time recognizing everybody. I certainly hope I didn't leave a group out, I'm sure I did, but really, it is a collective and team effort, so we're very excited. I want to thank the school committee, those that were able to attend. I know it's not easy when we extend an offer to events, hard for you to attend, but I do appreciate you attending convocation on our opening day. As Mrs. Berry shared with you, we did enroll into PD and then started school that first week in September. We've had quite the opening, certainly the heat threw a wrench in things for us, but we did, we navigated that and were able to overcome. For those of you that were at convocation, we talked about grit and perseverance and resiliency, and I think that was put to the test in those first few days. So, we lived by what we said we were going to, and everybody overcame, so it was great. So, I do appreciate that. I did want to share with you that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has released our assessment and accountability, and not just for us, but obviously all districts across the Commonwealth. That information was embargoed up until yesterday, where they did a public release. As we, as you know, or if you don't know, we'll do a more comprehensive presentation to you in the coming months, just to review all of that achievement and accountability data. You know, when we start to look at, obviously, we've been looking at the data as it's been coming out and made public. You know, when we look at our assessment data, obviously, that's based on MCAS and how we did there. There are pockets of improvement and, you know, positive areas, so we're proud of that. When we look at our overall accountability, accountability is based on certainly achievement, so, you know, they are, one is related to the other, but there are several other factors that go into that, such as how much our students grew on the assessment, so student growth, high school completion, progress towards English proficiency for our English learners, obviously chronic absenteeism, and then advanced coursework completion. So, looking at, and we're kind of assessed on those areas, and then we're given an accountability briefing. So, later this fall, we'll really be talking about those two areas. I think what we've seen, again, is glimmers of hope and progress on our achievement data. In terms of our accountability data, we didn't necessarily meet all of our targets that were established. One area I do want to point out that we're very, very excited about, because I do think it speaks to the potential for greater student achievement, is our chronic absenteeism. That was a concern for us last year, and we spoke about it as a committee, you spoke about it as a committee, and we talked about it as a team, and we actually met all of our targets and actually exceeded our targets as a district and at our individual sites, so we really reduced the number of chronic absenteeism across the district. I highlight that because I do believe it speaks to, once our students are here, here consistently, that they are going to be present and available to learn. So, we are hopeful, and again, we did see pockets of improvement, which is great, but I think, you know, when we talk more about it, something that we haven't done is shied away from where we are. There's still much work to be done, but we are up for the challenge, and we accept that challenge, and we will continue to kind of stay the course and tackle those obstacles in front of us. But again, as I shared, more information will be coming later this fall. I also wanted to just give you a quick update on my superintendent's transition plan. As you know, I've shared that with you, it's been shared with the community and posted to the district's website. So, you know, during, in that transition plan, I set out several areas that I wanted to try to accomplish over my first 100 days or so, really through the month of October. So, certainly, things are not quite accomplished yet, but I did want to just share some progress with you, just so you have an update. One of the very first things I wanted to do before school started was to be able to visit our site with Mr. Kilgore, make sure our buildings were ready to open, and that issues had been taken care of. Mr. Kilgore and I, he was, we were kind of two ships. He was working with the town departments, getting our buildings inspected, and so he was naturally doing that, and I was kind of, you know, chasing his tracks and meeting with the principals, in some cases, the head custodians, to make sure that anything that was outstanding was getting addressed before school. But as you can see, the buildings look great, so we're very proud of our facilities department and how our buildings look. I did say that I wanted to try to meet with each central office administrator in their respective departments. We still have a few to meet with, but I was able to meet with the facilities department, the business office, and meeting, upcoming meetings with IT, human resources, and special education. Central registration is actually scheduled for tomorrow, so I'll have that meeting with them as well. And as you know, I've shared with you, we meet every other week as a superintendent's roundtable, so our teaching and learning office, we're constantly meeting. One of the areas that we wanted to address was to evaluate our existing communication strategies. As you know, our PR assistant, Ms. Rovitz, had developed a Google survey around communication, how we communicate with families, and that was shared out right after the start of school. So, she is poring through that data now, just to see if the ways we're communicating with families is effective, do we need to make any changes, you know, how do parents prefer to get their information, is it phone call, is it email, is it the buzz, is it the website? So, really, having all that information will then help kind of form, you know, how we continue to communicate. So, excited about that. One of the areas I wanted to try to do is to meet with our town officials and community partners prior to school and obviously this fall, prior to the end of October. I have had the chance so far to meet with Mr. Joe Patrico from the Rainham Selectmen's Office. I had a chance to meet with Mr. Dutton and Mr. Moore. Mr. Dutton is the town manager for Bridgewater, and Mr. Moore is the council president, so I met with them both at the end of August. We actually had a joint meeting with Mr. Dutton, Ms. Carini, the Bridgewater Finance Director, Mr. Greg Barnes, who's the town administrator for Rainham, Mr. Lavalette, who is the Rainham Finance Director, Ms. Babalola, and Ms. Robashow at the end of August. Just to start the budget planning process, we think it's important that we, you know, continue our partnership with both towns, have clear, transparent communication about the state of not just the district, but also the towns, so as we do enter into budget season, we have a clear picture of where everybody's at. So, that meeting was, was great. I was able to meet with the Ray Rainham Association for Volunteers in Education, their leadership at the end of August, or October, I apologize. I did then have a follow-up meeting with Mr. Barnes, Mr. Lavalette, and Ms. Riley, who is the Chair of the Select Board in Rainham, as well as Ms. Babalola joining me on that meeting, and that was to talk, you know, more specifically about Rainham. I did have the opportunity to meet with Chief O'Malley, Lieutenant Hennessy, and Lieutenant Shuster from the Bridgewater Police Department. I also have reached out to Rainham Police, Rainham Fire, and Bridgewater Fire, so we're in the process of scheduling those meetings. One of our community partners that I set out to meet with early on was Bridgewater State University, so Mrs. Berry and I had the chance to meet with President Clark today, Vice President Benny DiMascio, and Vice President Dinesh Lewinberger. It was a great meeting. We talked about our longstanding partnership and ways that we can increase that and make ourselves stronger partners, not just in the community, but also for the towns and for our students. for our students. I do want to share with you, this is something that President Clark started, I guess, two years ago at this point, was they have kind of repurposed, as you know, Sue McCollum was a long partner from Bridgewater State to the district where she would run the community grants program. Sue McCollum had retired, I guess, two or three years ago. And so they've kind of redesigned how they're doing that. Mr. DiMascio has taken over a lot of those responsibilities. But instead of having some of that money be available for grant opportunities, they are actually giving us a set amount each year. So President Clark graciously donated $25,000 to the district this year, and they did that last year as well. That money, we kind of looked historically at what programs benefited from those BSU community partner grants. And so really, just to name a few, that money has gone towards TJ Squared, the DECA program, our cybersecurity club. That was really kind of born out of our partnership with Bridgewater State. So our students are really benefiting from, you know, continue to benefit from those funds. And we're just so excited and grateful for President Clark's donation and his partnership as well. And obviously, you know, I've been able to get out and visit all of our schools multiple times, especially that first week with the heat. You know, my goal is to be able to visit every classroom across the district, and we're in the process of doing that now, getting back out into the buildings and seeing as many classrooms as we possibly can. So that would be an ongoing process. One of the things that I wanted to do is to offer meetings with school committee members, and I appreciate those that have taken me up on that offer. I've had a chance to meet with several of you, so thank you for doing that. And the offer still stands if you haven't had the chance. We obviously wanted to be able to present the student success plan. We've done that to staff, we're working on creating a presentation for the community, so we'll have that shortly to go out. And then some areas that, you know, I still am working on, meeting with some of the district parent leaderships, such as our CPAC, which I did have the chance to stop by last night and introduce myself, the district's DEI Advisory Committee, again, everyone had the chance to stop by, I had to introduce myself last night. But we obviously are in the process of creating an OutPAC, and I want to be able to get to the PTO meetings and some of the other district parent leadership meetings that we had in the past. And then obviously setting up meetings with the building administration. I've been able to meet with five out of the seven principals thus far, obviously two more to go. And those meetings have gone great, really hearing, you know, from some of our principals who've been here longer than others and getting that institutional and historical knowledge of the district has been very beneficial. And then obviously, you know, looking at ways how we can create other opportunities for our stakeholders to engage, so that's something that we're working on. Also on the list was to meet with our union representatives from each of our three collective bargaining units. I've been able to meet with two out of the three, the third one, we've been in contact and looking to schedule the date. So we're excited. I think, you know, we really subscribe to the thought process that if we can meet on a regular proactive basis, that some of the, you know, maybe issues that come up between labor and management can be avoided. We've been very pleased with the ongoing relationships we've had thus far with, with both of the unions that we've met with. Along those lines, we did have a very productive meeting the other day with representatives from the BREA, Mr. Conroy and Mr. Patrick, the union leadership with BREA. And during that meeting, one of the items that we discussed was negotiations. And as you know, we are due to begin negotiations this year for a new collective bargaining agreement. So at that meeting, we did both agree that it is time to engage in that process. So I did want to share with you, and I know members of the negotiation subcommittee, I did reach out to you and share that information with you, but just wanted to inform the full school committee that that agreement has been entered into and will begin negotiations in the coming months. And then really lastly was the development of the fiscal 25-year budget. Believe it or not, Ms. Babalola and I started that process back in August, in early August, we met with the administrative team, we talked about, you know, some of the changes that would be made to the development, the budget development process, and really some areas that we wanted to focus on and that they needed to also be aware of. We've, you know, met obviously with our town officials to discuss that. We had put together our budget timeline, we've also shared some of that information with the administrative team, we have a meeting next week, we will be also covering this. We're hoping to get our individual department, school-based budgets in, fingers crossed, by the end of October. That gives us plenty of time to review those. But again, we'll continue that process. We're very pleased with how it's been going thus far, but we look forward to presenting to you a budget in January that is reflective of that. And that, that is just, again, a quick update I wanted to share with you about my transition plan and. That is it. That's my report for the month.
Questions for superintendent, Mrs. Mainville?
Mr. Powers, I was wondering, from all the conversations that you've had, are there any common threads that have come up from those conversations?
So I think depending on, again, you know, the group that I'm speaking with, there definitely are some common threads that, you know, we, well, on a positive, most people have a very positive perception of the district, which is great. I think, you know, everybody acknowledges that certainly there's work to do and we need to continue on improving. One area that does seem to emerge is, I think we're sending a lot of information out. Is everybody getting that information? Is everybody reading that information? Is everybody digesting that information? So really looking around communication, I think is a common theme that we really need to take a closer look at. And that is, you know, from central office to home, central office departments to each other, central office of the building admin, really looking at how we're communicating. So I would say that is something that definitely has come to the forefront for me thus far that we really need to, I really want to take a look at. And then, you know, depending on, again, you know, when we met with BSU, our relationship has been so positive, you know, a lot of great feedback there. Same thing with both towns, I think both towns acknowledge, you know, how positive the relationships have been in the last few years and that we do seem to be collaborating a lot more, so just making that commitment, you know, to those areas. But I would say, really for me right now, the communication piece is the one that's kind of emergent, seems to be consistent in my process.
I have another question.
Sure.
I was curious, how will the assessment and accountability summary that you mentioned inform the student's success plan?
So I think the, obviously we're going to, we already have been, but we'll present this information and take a closer look at it. We'll obviously, you know, make any changes, updates to the student's success plan that we need to. I think when we look at the data, it's fairly consistent with last year. So again, many of the things that we identified last year that we needed to build into the student's success plan, I think will just naturally carry over because, again, the results look similar. But certainly if, you know, we find an area that we had, you know, greater success in or are still lagging behind in a certain area, we need to make adjustments, we will certainly do that.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Just to follow up on Ms. Mainville, I would hope and expect, as you are talking to the building administrators and et cetera about the budget, that everyone is building their budgets with an eye toward that student's success plan as to how is this budget going to support the student's success plan? And then as you review it with everybody before bringing it to us and obviously to the budget subcommittee, being able to articulate very clearly to everybody here, but more importantly, everybody out there, how this budget actually works to implement the student's success plan as we've adopted it and what it means not to adopt that budget, like what does it mean to the student's success plan? If we don't do this, then this puts this in danger in the student's success plan. So that everybody understands and goes in eyes wide open. You know, we've had this conversation many times, I know, but I just wanted to make sure everybody heard it, and you heard it once again.
I think it's a great point, Mr. Fitzgibbons and members of the school committee, and that's something that Ms. Babalola and I, Babalola and I have talked extensively about, making sure that, you know, we're making sure that every dollar that should be going directly to students is going directly to students. There are certainly going to be things, as you know, that, you know, indirectly impact students, but have to go to other departments such as facilities and so forth. But really, when we're talking about teaching and learning, how can we have the greatest impact on kids? And, you know, yes, we might need to, we might have to buy new furniture, but if we can sacrifice new furniture for maybe another teacher, that's going to have a greater impact than maybe a chair that they could still sit in, but maybe it doesn't look as nice. But so yes, we are, we have impressed that.
At least we didn't need to turn on the heat the last few weeks.
No, we, yes, our heating bill has certainly has not gone up because of the heat.
Mr. Powers, one question, and it may be a little premature, because I know it was just approved yesterday along with the MCAS data being released yesterday, but I think it may be helpful in the future, is I know DUCY approved a major change in health curriculum and is kind of monumental in the state and what it's going to mean or not mean, but it would be maybe in a future meeting for people to understand what that is and the timeframes particular associated with adopting that curriculum, because it is a massive change.
It is, yes. Yeah, that's a great point. Madam Chair, certainly happy to have Mr. O'Connell, our coordinator of wellness and athletics, as well as Mrs. Barry and myself, you know, share some additional information on that in an upcoming meeting, what that may, what the implications will be for the various grade levels, what may change, what may not change, and definitely, we can definitely do that.
Yeah, and what flexibility as a district that we have, there's some flexibility, but not some, not some flexibility with that health curriculum and what that means that we create. Do you, just offhand, I don't know if you know, like, what is the date that schools are supposed to be implementing? Is there a date or is it just?
I don't have that off the top.
Okay, no, I just, okay, great, thank you. Any other questions? None?
All right, thank you, Mr. Powers. Next is the budget, Mrs. Keating?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Monday, September 11th, 2023, the budget subcommittee met at 7:00 PM in the superintendent's conference room. In attendance were Mrs. Conrad Laberinto, Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. Martelli, Superintendent Powers, the business manager, Ms. Babalola, our treasurer, Ms. Robashow, and our recording secretary, Mrs. McDougal, as well as myself. I do not have any voting items that came out of that meeting, but I do have multiple items to report out on as an FYI to keep everyone updated. I do know further on in the reports, the quarterly report from Ms. Babalola has been moved to October, but we did talk quite a bit in subcommittee about the 2024 fiscal year budget, just to get a detailed overview of where we stand right now. So at that time, Ms. Babalola presented a detailed overview, drawing attention to any encumbrances and lines that she's watching right now. The first area that she pointed out were the staff encumbrances. All employee salaries are 99% encumbered, and the substitute line is also being closely monitored, which is always one that we always monitor. Mr. Fitzgibbons had several questions about, including at what point Ms. Babalola would bring forward any concerns about the budget line. Ms. Babalola noted that the line is volatile due to variables such as unexpected illnesses and maternity leaves, but she's confident that the funds will see us through February. But those are definitely something at every budget meeting, we look that over and see where we are. On page eight, we reviewed transportation line, again, that's always one that we watch. It currently has a negative balance due to encumbrances. Ms. Babalola explained that the line is another fluid area in the budget because of unknown such as students moving into the district that may require special transportation. As we saw earlier, there's always that fluctuation at the beginning of the year, so we also, that's a line that we always keep a close eye on. Mr. Fitzgibbons asked at what point if what was budgeted for was a realistic number or a worst-case scenario. Superintendent Powers noted that this is an inflationary number, as the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District was quote, "closer to 1.3 million" last year. We continued reviewing numbers and discussing the budget process for projecting crop costs into future budgets. Something that did come up, looking at the budget, so Mr. Powers just discussed, he is creating the budget now in September, or started in August, for fiscal year '25. So we start that process quite early, anticipating or trying to anticipate what this year is going to look like and then what that following year might look like. So we try and have enough to cover those costs, but it is a fluid number, we can't anticipate until this year closes what it might be. We also looked at the next page nine regarding utilities, which is another, which thankfully, yes, we didn't have to have the heat on yet, but that's always something that we watch closely. A note for that, Ms. Babalola also pointed out, that we have a very low DECA therm rate right now, which we've had the past couple of years, but that contract expires at the end of October. So we may not receive a favorable rate, we may, but that's something that we're going to have to talk about after the close of October, when we have a new contract, and we'll discuss that at the next meeting as well. Let me scroll down. Mr. Fitzgibbons, so also, Mr. Fitzgibbons requested a budget trend report that portrays anticipated versus actual spending over the two-year period. And after some discussion on how that report could look, Mrs. McDougal was working on that. I think she did put something in, was it uploaded to the drive or did you just email me about that? Okay, so I'm going to speak to her next week and try and see if we can come up with something before our next budget meeting that would show that, so we can discuss that, because I think that that is something valid to kind of look at. Also, the out-of-district tuition line was gone over with the Director of Business Services, stating two-plus million dollars in circuit breakage funds would also be used to offset those costs. Next, we received a track and tennis court update from Mr. Powers. If anyone has been to the high school, you will see that it, they made quick work of starting work on that. Right now, we are on time and on budget for the track and tennis court. They did say barring any adverse weather, so their goal is to get it done by the end of October, hopefully that the weather will stay as it has been. If anything happens, weather-related, that might push it, but I don't believe it's going to push starting any sports, which Mr. Powers indicated.
Yes, I'm happy to answer that. So I actually had a meeting with the, somebody from Lawrence Lynch the end of last week, and their intent right now is to continue to push on through the fall. They are hoping for good weather. Obviously, the last couple of days and the remainder of this week look really, really good in terms of weather. I know next week, the extended forecast looked good. I think we're due for a little rain over the weekend, but as long as the temperature stays at, you know, a desired degree, they will be able to put material down. That material should be able to cure. But again, as we get later into the fall, depending on what happens, they actually do plan to pour some material, if you actually, and it's even changed since last week when I gave my report. I mean, it really, it's all been graded, it's leveled, they do intend to pour kind of the base material on the track tomorrow if all goes well. So you'll actually see somewhat of an outline of what the track will, will look like over the next couple of days. That will take some time to cure. Again, they need kind of ideal weather to do that, and then same thing, they'll start working on the tennis courts. All of that's been excavated, they're working on grading those areas as well. So we're hopeful, as long as the weather stays consistent, that we will have a track and tennis court area this fall. We did talk about contingencies and what would happen if it does go into the spring. Early spring can be somewhat tricky with weather, but, you know, they're hoping that, you know, they don't have to worry about that, but if so, then they'll have to wait for the weather to kind of clear up in the spring, late winter, early spring, to be able to finish any work that's not done.
Okay. Also regarding that, the parking lot bid closes tomorrow, Ms. Babalola stated. With the part of that bid was that the project should be completed by October 16th, again, weather-dependent. So as soon as that bid closes, I will talk to Ms. Babalola and have an update on the parking lot as well. As we know, part of that whole process was moving some of the upper parking lot down, so we lost about 20 spaces, but those have been moved up to Bridgewater Middle School. So revenue-wise, we did not lose any, we just moved those spaces that we were missing. So I'll have an update from that as well. Also, on our subcommittee agenda for budget, as many people have heard, we did have some things in the news regarding the Brockton School Committee and some fiscal problems that they ran into. So this is always something that I know the public wants to make sure that that's not going to happen to their town or city, and I know everyone was following that. So we did discuss it, what sort of controls we have in place, how could this have happened, which we can't really speculate as to what happened for another city, but in-house, how do we audit ourselves? How do we make sure that we're keeping on top and we're not going $14 million of a budget, which would be catastrophic, frankly? So also, Mr. Fitzgibbons did speak to, you know, how S.R. grants are handled, what are the auditing practices around those, things that are outside, you know, necessarily the operating budget, which Mr. Powers spoke to, how those are handled, and how, you know, what kind of safeguards we have in place regarding federal funding. And then at the operational budget, what do we have in? So as I stated- So as I stated, at every budget, we do go over the budget. What are the lines? What is, you know, Ms. Babalola concerned about? We, as a committee, look through and see what lines we're concerned about. Are those lines, you know, what's going on with those? So as a Subcommittee, we always look at that. Also, independent of that, we always have a DESI audit each year, and we have a third-party audit as well. So there are several people overseeing, it's not just somebody in-house. And we are different than the city of Brockton, which has a mayor as their chair, so since we are regional, we, we don't run that way. So we do have a third-party audit us, DESI always does their audit. We, as a school committee and a Subcommittee, are always watching our budget as well. But, you know, this is something that we take very seriously and will continue to make sure that we're, we're watching, because especially going into potentially a bad budget year, we want to make sure we're staying within our budget that we've set and not go over. So along that lines as well, we did have our Subcommittee, I believe it was Ms. Conrad Laberinto or Mr. Fitzgibbons. Also, we did talk about have Ms. Babalola setting up a workshop for us to kind of go over budget items such as warrants and things that we sign each year. Potter, being on the Budget Subcommittee, we sign warrants each month. So we are going to have a workshop for all committee members at the beginning of, prior to our budget next month, to kind of talk that through and see what they are, so we know what we're signing as well, which I think is extremely important each month. And then we did have a few others that Mr. Powers did note to us. We do have a new base program director, Rosemary Bell. That revolving account we did talk about last year was not, you know, making money, that was not, that was one of the revolving accounts that we did need to continue looking at. The amount of students enrolled was not supporting the program, which it had in the past. So Mr. Powers did have some discussions with Ms. Bell and some administrators to look at their enrollment versus their staffing at each of the locations that we offer base programming as well. So since it's the beginning of the school year, we don't have enough data yet, so probably at the next month, after we've had a full month of how many students are enrolled, how much staffing we have, we can talk about, do we have them reduce programming? Do we have them look at staffing? Do we do a potential price increase? So that's something that we're going to have to talk about as well. Lastly, Chromebook repairs. So with the one-to-one that we have in the district, part of that is each student is, receives their own Chromebook. For any repairs that are needed, that are not just common, you know, this broke, but needs to be replaced and is brought to the IT department, those bills last year were Not all of that has been collected for last year. Only $9,050 has been collected out of that, leaving an outstanding balance of $8,210. So this was discussed. Mr. Fitzgibbons did ask that these fees be revisited to ensure that they're being reasonable, so that's something that we are looking at as well. Mrs. Conrad Laberinto also did request that the prices be sent to parents in advance of any potential charges. So although parents do receive when they take their Chromebook every three years, they do sign a contract, it doesn't advise parents that there will be fees and what they are, but it would be actually helpful if yearly, annually, that also gets sent to families, so there is a reminder that they know what those fees are going to be, so it's not a surprise, and that they can know that that's going to need to be paid. So that's something that we're looking at as well. We approved the minutes of August 21st, 2023, for our Budget Subcommittee as presented. Our next Budget Subcommittee meeting is Monday, October 16th at 6:30. It's going to be a little bit later next month because we will have the budget workshop for committee members at 5:00 PM prior to that. And that concludes my Budget Subcommittee report, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Questions? Mrs. Mayne?
I wanted to understand better, what are the district, what steps is the district taking to mitigate the risk associated with the variables that we talked, you, you mentioned, specifically around like transportation line, the staffing, utilities rate going up?
So the utilities rate, to speak to that, that's going to be a comp buy, is that correct, Ms. Babalola?
Yes, the electricity is going to be comp buy. There is this webinar coming up next month as to the renewal process, and also the natural gas gone out to negotiate prices. And actually, I'm going to talk to one person that I've gone through, different vendors, to see if we can be able to have a better price as to what we have now. In the past, what we are currently using, it's about $5 and some change by the acton. So the price that this person was giving to crap for us now is about $8.5, $8.30, there about. And that is something that we're looking at, and we're hoping that by the time we're ready to sign the contracts, it will have gone down, if not the same thing. So we're actually looking around to see where we can get a better deal for the district in times of utility.
Thank you, Ms. Babalola.
To follow, can I have a follow?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Is there any steps that the district can take to reduce energy consumption? Has that been part of the conversation as well?
Absolutely. I believe Mr. Powers can speak to that. During the first week of this opening, what we tried to do as a district was to kind of shut off what needed to be shut off to be able to control the amount of electricity that we're using, and I believe that actually we need a lot to-
It helps us with some of the buildings, the older buildings, that we did have fans running, air conditioning units. We were obviously expending a lot of electricity during that time, and so we looked at what else can we shut off, you know, were there hallway lights that we could dim or turn down, just to try to save some energy so that it could go to these units, so that they weren't tripping breakers and so forth. I think as a whole, we, we do look into, when we can, automation of light switches for classrooms, so that, you know, they're not constantly on. But obviously, whether you have 30 students in a class or one student, the lights come on, and so, you know, there isn't always the savings there when you, you think of, say, the number of students. But certainly, you know, if we can, that's something that the Facilities Department over time, and even, you know, I know Mr. Johnson and his team, especially with the new building, a lot of that automation all went through that process. In terms of, you know, looking at the heat, you know, Mr. Kilgore is bound by state law in terms of when the heat can come on and when the heat can go off. So, you know, in terms of turning it off early on a winter day that may not be as cold, we don't really have a lot of flexibility there. And, you know, that's something we hear about, say, come March, when it, you have a warm day, the heat's still cranking, because it has to be on, but, you know, we're always looking at ways that we can, you know, can conserve energy if possible. It was something we even talked about the other day at the new building committee meeting, you know, say the gas meters, you know, we have some higher-end gas meters there that tell us what each appliance is running. Those are great, but the overall, you still have to have gas in the building, no matter, you know, you can't say, well, I'm not going to, you know, heat this particular unit just because it's running high, you still have to heat it. So sometimes there's the saving potential, sometimes there's not. We really try to look at some of the other green initiatives, such as the lighting, you know, can we change out light fixtures so that they go to LED fixtures? They tend to last longer. Sometimes the cost upfront is a little bit higher, but they do predict that over time, those will last, you know, much longer than a typical light bulb. So we, we do see more savings there than we do, say, on, you know, the general electricity and general heat. The years that we do benefit, like last winter when it wasn't as bad, you know, we certainly see some benefits there, but it really is somewhat unpredictable with some of those utility lines.
Any research on renewable energy projects?
I, I can't say that that's something that I think we've engaged in at this point, but we can certainly look to see if there's anything out there that we can do.
Okay. Other questions, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Just one quick observation, and then Mr. Powers opened the door, so I have to ask the question to him. Comp buys, as Ms. King referred to and as you talked about, that's a state purchasing cooperative that we go through to get the best possible deal because we have the biggest possible negotiating power. So it's not like little Bridgewater-Rainham can run out and get a better deal for just us than the whole state can do under this comp buys program. And so you really, you really know what the price is going to be at that point because you can see it right there, and you know you're not going to get better than that. So I just wanted to clear that up for everybody at home. Can we turn off the lights at the Mitchell School, Mr. Powers?
We can, for the most-
Okay, great.
I, I say that, Mr. Fitzgibbons, and then as Mr. Dolan can attest, sitting through some of those meetings, as soon as we're told that, yep, everything's good and the lights turn off, the next day they come back on. So I, I am confident that I can say we can shut them off tonight, but you may drive them either on the way home, and it could be ablaze, so hopefully.
Thank you.
I had another questions. Are any considerations being made for low-income families when it comes to the fees for the Chromebooks?
Yes, Mr. Johnson, his team work with the families. If we know of the family situation, those are things that are taken into consideration. Some families have shared with Mr. Johnson, Ms. Robichaud, as they've reached out to them, that they're just not in a financial situation where they can, you know, take on that cost. And they've either worked, you know, parents have offered either want a payment plan, or in some cases, we just, as a district, have said, okay, we'll, we'll absorb the cost of making those replacements.
And so at what point are they made aware of those options? Is it after you get the bill and they haven't paid? Or is it part of the fee where you have like an asterisk at the bottom, if you don't have the means to pay, we can work something out? Just trying to figure-
I believe it's, it's after the fact, once Mr. Johnson's team and Ms. Robichaud and her team reach out with the bills. And, you know, we're either hearing back from parents right away who will respond to them to say, this is my situation, or it may be, we haven't received any funds, so then we'll reach out and say, you know, are you able to pay this?
Other questions?
Madam Chair, through you to Mrs., Ms. Babalola, is it normal at this time of year to see a negative balance in the transportation line? I know you said it's fluid, but traditionally, is it normal?
Okay.
Could you-
And, oh, I'm sorry.
May, so I think, Mr. Dolan, as the prior Budget Chair, could you explain the encumbrance?
Yeah, it's, that's all right, so, and, please jump in if I do this wrong, but encumbering just means that the money is set aside to be held to pay for future bills that are going to come in. We typically run negative in transportation just because it is one of our largest costs as a regional school district. I will say, one of the positives from the state this year is we hope and plan to get 100% reimbursement for regional transportation. That is what was put in the budget. I'm hoping that doesn't change, frankly, knock on wood, but that is, that is a norm, yes, to ultimately answer your question.
And in the past, we usually get 100%?
No. So-
In the past five years-
Right, that's what I saw.
It's run from 73% up to, the most was like 90.
I think 92 last year. So the state law states, state law states that if a regional school district, it was an incentive years ago for towns to regionalize, that the state would cover their transportation costs as long as there was money in the budget. That is in the law.
Subject to appropriation.
Exactly. So that has, in the nine years, 92% is the highest we've ever gotten. Prior to that, I don't know if we've ever received 100%. I don't think we have. And it's not just us, mind you, it's other, all regional districts get the sort of same percentage. It's-
So the amount in the budget does not account for the reimbursement that we're receiving, which is why it looks like it's in the negative?
Correct, because we don't owe, our budget process is before the state's budget process, so we have always done a very conservative number for transportation, just because it's-
And staffing, it sounds like, too, right? So is that how we're mitigating these fluid kind of budget lines? We're just kind of being extra cautious and kind of putting more in the budget?
I, I don't want to speak for this year, but that's what we've done in the past.
Yeah, we always try and encumber what, well, like I said, we're looking now for a budget for 2025, so we're kind of looking at it like, what are we going to encumber for 18 months from now? What would the most be that we might need? So, I mean, Mr. Fitzgibbons had had a discussion, you know, how do we try and get that as close as we can? Which we, we, do we try and change that as the budget goes for, goes on until we get it presented?
When you say close as you can to actual?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which we do try to, but again, we're doing it so far in advance, and there's so many variables, and we're never exactly sure, like, you know, how much are they going to reimburse us for transportation, maybe? Which the new governor has said she's going to reimburse 100% this year, but we shall see. We haven't seen that yet.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Mrs. King made reference to me, and I appreciate it, and you, you were definitely, like, you, you were where I was, but I'd also, I'd also add to what I'd say is, and have a reasonable margin for ever.
I mean, there's always that margin, because we can't-
We want to, we want to understand, at least I do, I don't want to speak for the committee, but I want to understand, what do we really think it's going to cost, and then make sure we're prudent in putting a budget together? I don't, I don't go into a refrigerator purchase with my wife saying it's going to be 1,500. I say it's going to be 2,000, and if I get 1,750, I'm happy. You know, something like that. And then, if I may, just to pile on Mr. Dolan's point and your point about the 100%, State Representative Angelo D'Amelio, State Senator Mark Pacico, State Senator Walter Timmeltie, those are your representatives at the State House, please reach out to them and ask to support 100% for regional transportation.
Yeah, and I will just, I will just echo or add to is, one of the measures that we put in place around stopgap or whatever, or the, looking at the budget, too, is in October, and this has been a practice for ye, for a few years here, we freeze the budgets. There is no more spending, there is no more, or it's, it needs to be an emergency year, it needs to, there, so there, the budget is frozen in October, so we're putting stopgap measures in around spending.
That's been the practice for at least nine years.
Yeah.
Other questions, budget questions?
When do we get refunded by the state, then?
Transportation is not, I'm sorry, I don't mean those.
Go for it.
We're always, it's always behind, so it's never, it's never for the current year, it's always for the year. Yes, yeah. So that's, that's also challenging in that money that we're anticipating to come in, you know, may not be reflective of the cost, so then we have to try to, as Mr. Fitzgibbons says, you know, accurately budget as much as we think it's going to be, with knowing that we're getting that reimbursement in. But it's, it's not, it's not month for month, so we don't get September's transportation costs in October. It really isn't until the following year.
And we can never, like, have too little, because that would be catastrophic.
You'd rather always be on the conservative side, because-
Yeah.
Rather have too much than not enough.
Other questions? Nope, another one.
So in the written report, I, I thought I read that there was going to be a report out on the out-of-district tuition.
Did I not? So I think that was, you mean in my budget report?
Yeah, or I read it somewhere. And that the, the circuit breaker funds will be used to offset-
Oh, yeah, that's-
Yes. So that's a similar process in terms of, and I'm sorry, Mrs. King, I didn't know.
Yeah, no, I didn't read that part.
Similar process to, you know, transportation, we receive circuit breaker funding this year, really from last year, but we use it to offset special education cost tuitions for this year as that money comes in. So in terms-
Say that again?
Right. Yeah. So in terms of it running in the negative, we know that we're going to be receiving circuit breaker funding from the state.
And is circuit breaker funding what it sounds like? The circuit breakers?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, no, I'm sorry, that's what it's called. Yes, it's to kind of bridge the gap between, you know, unanticipated costs that districts may- may incur by having students, the tuition of students. So that money comes in, we know that we're going to budget X amount. It may be an accurate number, or it may not. If it is a little bit lower, as we're getting that circuit breaker funding in, we apply that to any deficit that may be in tuition.
All right. I was like, circuit breakers? Why is that working?
It's for just to be, it's for kids that go out of district, and to special education kids typically that go out of district, and the cost for those kids can be pretty extreme.
And for this budget year, we were told last year by the state to budget a fourteen percent increase in that line. So that's one of those sort of unknowns that we, the state advises, and when they're advised in fourteen, I think we did a little bit more than fourteen, frankly.
And I think, just so, because I'm inexperienced in this, is those rates for out-of-districts are set by the state, so like, that fourteen percent increase is set by the state, and we have no control over those costs for out-of-district schools, or for, you know, special education sub-separate schools.
Right.
So if the state tells us fourteen percent, there's going to be a fourteen percent increase.
Other questions? Great, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. King. Policy, Mr. Dan Marino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The policy subcommittee, due to scheduling conflicts, I could not meet this month. I do note on the agenda that JEB entrance age was set for the first read. In discussing with Mr. Dolan, we noticed that it was not included in the packet. Going through everything, I do note that the minutes from our last meeting do not reflect the copy that is in our shared drive, so with permission, I would like to table that for this evening to be brought up next meeting, so that the correct policy can be reviewed for everybody in the packet.
Great, thank you, Mr. Dan Marino. Any questions?
Can I go back to my budget for one second? So MASC does a lot of times learning lunches, like on a Friday, a couple, once a month or something, they'll do a learning lunch and do like a little workshop thing. They did one, I don't know how far back, it was about Chapter Seventy and Circuit Breaker, and was a really good, like, tutorial of like, explaining stuff. So I'm going to see if I can find it. I know they saved the slide deck of it, so if I can find it, I'll send that around, because I think that's helpful, like, the terminology and like, how that works, too, is helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Personnel, Mrs. Healy?
Good evening, Madam Chair, this is the personal report for dates from August 19th through September 18th. In the past month, we hired new staff members, had six reassignments, four retirements, six resignations, four rehires, and three notices of medical leave of absences.
Questions for Mrs. Healy?
I have one. Sure. What does it mean by rehire?
So, great question. So a rehire could be anything from, they've worked here in the past, and they came back on board. So I have some, one of my rehires worked in summer program for ESY, and then was rehired as an ESP. So there's, there are mostly things like that. We did have one staff member who's coming back, so that's great, he's coming back to us from another employment, and I think that was it for rehires.
Sometimes, too, we have positions where, you know, especially with some of our SRF funding, they may be year-to-year positions, so they were here last year, depending on, you know, their budget contingent going forward, you know, do we get that additional grant funding? And so in many cases, we unfortunately notify them at the end of the year, your position is ending, but then we may be able to rehire them in the fall.
Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'll just add a story that used to happen regularly in Bridgewater before we fully regionalized. The town meeting would never get done before the layoff notices had to go out from the school district. And so the shop teacher would come in at the end of the school year and say, I just got laid off, guys, I'll see you next year, because he knew that the budget would get passed and he'd be rehired, but it was just a procedural thing at that point in time sometimes. Luckily, we don't have to do that, but it could be just as simple as that, too, sometimes.
Mrs. Healy, open positions we have?
Open positions, we have, we have like the long-term sub-assignments to fill those medical leave of absences. We also have, let's see, three or four ESP positions we're still trying to fill, and then a couple assistant positions as well.
Any other questions? No? All right, thank you, Mrs. Healy.
Thank you.
Community liaison, Mrs. Mayneville, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Only two outreach this month, both from community members. I received from one community member numerous questions on the kinds of decisions that the school can make without parent consent. With the help of Mr. Powers, I answered some of them, which led to additional follow-up questions, and so I have instructed that community member to reach out to you directly, because they're just really getting very specific in, as it pertains to the day-to-day operations of the school. I had another community member who reached out about the health and wellness, the curriculum and the changes that are being made, wanting to really understand how it will be implemented and integrated into the school, and wanting to lend their support because they have over twenty-something years of experience, and wanting to be part of any process that's opened up to the community to inform that process.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, I had a few parents reach out to me. Opening of school is always fun, right? But I will, I will say, I didn't have a lot of complaints about the buses, so congratulations to Lucini, Mr. Powers, and your transportation staff. It seemed to go off very well, there were no 4:30 PM drop-offs at random spots with kids, so that's great. But, but there were concerns about coming into the high school in the morning and the traffic there, and if anything could be done about it, given the buses and some of the parents and some of the students and so on and so forth. I imagine it'll sort itself out, that's what I tried to assure the person, but it was a couple people, so I just wanted to make sure I brought that up. And then obviously, with the beginning of school, especially with the, with the younger grades, I've heard a lot from, from parents around school safety and how important that is for them. I know we, as a school committee, feel that way, I know you, as an administrative team, feel that way, and obviously, we don't discuss all the security measures we have in place because that just gives the bad guys an idea of what we can deal with. But, you know, even down to the smallest thing, like, I know a few years ago, a different administration, I'm sure, you know, et cetera, but that there were doors being propped open at the high school for teams to come in and out more easily from the gym to the field. That's, that's kind of a security risk at that point in time. Even the smallest thing can, can lead to a consequence no one wants to see. So I just make sure we stay on top of it, our, our safety committee stays on top of it, the administration stays on top of it, and, you know, make sure they're, they're really looking at everything through the lens of, is this the safest practice? Can we be a hundred percent sure? No, you can never be a hundred percent sure, but let's be as sure as we can. And that, as I said, was a, was a theme I got from many parents as we opened up this year. How do I know my child's safe going to your schools? I said, how, you know, and that's, you know, it's an important question, and one I know we all take very, very seriously, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgibbons. Anything else?
The next item we had on the agenda, we are moving to the October meeting, was the budget quarterly report. By moving to October will give us the ability to review a full quarter of budget data, so that will happen at the October meeting. At this point, we'll move into new business of the approval of the payroll of the warrants. So I will entertain a motion to approve the payroll warrants dated September 10th, 2023, and Septem, or excuse me, sorry, that's not right, August 24th, 2023, and August 7th, 2023.
September 7th.
Yeah. September 7th, oh, sorry. August 24th and September 7th.
Motion.
Second. Motion been made by Mr. Fitzgibbons, second by Mrs. King.
I just note that Mr. Dolan recused himself, so that, that's for the record.
All of, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? I don't think so, okay. At this point, I'll move into committee announcements. Anyone have any announcements or comments? I do have one announcement, I will just say is, just like to announce that we, our regional school district, will be hosting the annual second, second annual US band competition on Saturday, October 14th, at the high school from 6:00 to 9:00. They are expecting a great turnout. They expect around fifteen hundred spectators. There will be nine bands, from The Blackstone to Dennis Yarmouth to Connecticut, that have already signed up, so please attend and watch our band and watch everybody else compete on the 14th.
It was a lot of fun last year.
It was.
Anything else? The next school committee meeting will be on October 18th at the high school in the lecture hall. And at this point, I, this concludes our regular school committee meeting. I will entertain a motion to adjourn the September 20th meeting.
So moved?
Second. Motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbons and second by Mrs. King, all those in favor?
Aye.